Yeah. Good evening. This is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded. And that some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly eighties band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever. And may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board. Are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. The Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. JT. Here. Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
And Tom Sanford here. Um, with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M Tuesday. September 12th, 2023. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent. With Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and town and general guidelines. Remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly. Physically accessible location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Please speak clearly to ensure that accurate minutes are recorded and for any response, please wait until. You are yielded before. State your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. First order of business, can I entertain a motion that we accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Is there any?
Tim, you're unmute.
You're muted now. Any?
Second.
Any discussion? No. Your A I program did a wonderful job, except that it made a couple of mistakes that were caught by a human. Fortunately, Carolyn used her A I program to find my mistakes.
Right here.
Okay, I will ask you to vote to accept the minutes. JT.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion caddies unanimously. Thank you. Uh, is there any other administrative matters mail that we need to chat about?
Nothing that I have, although I haven't been to the mailbox for a while. There's nothing very interesting there anymore.
Oh, okay. So I'll bring up an administrative matter. Um, we were, um, I got the email about. Creating or putting together the plan for the Capitol Committee. So last year we put something together, then they decided they weren't going to have us. Go through that process. We went through a different process, but we should talk about whether we want to. How much we want to put in for master plan money or anything like that. Mr. Wheeler. Do you, we on the, usually we put in five thousand dollars, is that?
And I think it's, we've done five for, since you were a little kid, so I think it's probably time to up it. Maybe go to, go to seventy-five, because it is, I mean, look at the housing production plan, that was over twenty, so. You know, that's just one component of the master plan. I mean, that was the idea, but we're, we're not gonna, gonna. Get there if we just do five, I don't think.
So seventy-five hundred, the only thing we may get is, we may get a little bit of pushback because my friend. Gave us a little pushback about the, um, we have, you know, a series of five thousand dollar accounts and we're not spending it. On, you know, we're not exhausting it in one fiscal year, in other words.
Yeah, what they'll find though is that when we finally get the. And Emily sends us her exorbitant bill for the rest of the work, um. You know, we're going to tax into that piece that's, that's left. And, and we need to think about some other objectives for the master plan and get those rolling, because. Emily's going to be done with this one and ready.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with, with, with going for the seventy-five hundred. I think that's. Probably smart.
Yeah, I think by town meeting, we'll be able to demonstrate that we burned through a good percentage of those other five thousand amounts, so.
Okay, we were talking about doing some rewrites on the bylaw, right?
Yeah, because, and, and that one, we might apply. I think the commission managed to get some money. Oh, what town was it? Princeton? Emily will be able to tell us. They did a, a zoning bylaw diagnostic in which. They really, that's what I think we want to do. We were talking about that last time and. Get an evaluation of the. Entire bylaw and the inconsistencies that exist within it as a result of doing a piecemeal for so many years now, so. But I think there was some grant money that we might try to go after, so we can talk to the C M R P C folks about them.
I think that's a wise position.
Just out of curiosity, what other parts of the master plan would we? Be looking at?
Well, open space is good. And housing is good. But economic development and transportation and there, there begin to be. I mean, there are other pieces that you can put in. That we haven't addressed in the past. Governance, for instance, I mean, you know, you can talk about. That in general and try to figure out ways in which to. Put those types of issues in, um. I talked to Trish Suddles about. The Surgeon General's report. That came out on loneliness and its impact on, on health and community viability and stuff. I said to Trish, do, Berlin might be interested in working with the commission on a. On a, on a more holistic. Piece of a master plan that looked at. Community health in some way, you know. A, a big picture health. And I don't know how to define what that means, but I think that that might very well be part of a master plan, too.
That'd be an interesting little concept.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'd be fun.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what, you know, other things we would be. We would look at.
So if, if we decided that health was something we wanted to fold into the master plan, would we be? Stepping on any other boards' toes?
I think, I mean, we could, what we've always done with the master plan is we've, like with. With housing, we've worked with Housing Partnership, now the Housing Trust with. Open space, we've worked with REC and, and Conservation with. With this health issue, community viability, whatever, you could work with a bunch of different groups. You could work with the Board of Health, you could work with. Economic development, you could, I mean. Cross.
Right, because it's, it's. Physical health, but it's also like cultural health, right?
I think so. I think it's health and it's. It's economic, it's cultural, it's physical, it's, you know. And the, the senior citizen, the, 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 uh. What do we call it? The. They just didn't survey, right? I mean, we could work with them too, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Be a fun study.
It would be.
Yeah.
And I think it would be a model that, I mean, maybe we go after some D L T A money, but I mean, it's. There might be some state money in addition, or some Worcester. From, what Emily knows this too, the foundation, the. I can never remember their name. Um, but they, they throw some money at projects like this too, so we might. We might design a, a project that would have enough. Appeal that a lot of other towns would look at it later as a template, you know, to.
That'll be cool.
Uh, Tom, Chris Keith has her hand up.
Okay.
Hey, Chris.
Hi.
Hi, Chris.
Um, you were thinking of council on aging, Tim?
Yes, council on aging.
And then, you know, I wanted to let you know that. You know, the surveys that went out also, they're going to have the gerontology report. Uh, Thursday night. I think it's at six thirty. It could be hybrid. But I'm not sure if it'll be hybrid. Or else it will be in person.
It, it almost seemed like I saw a notice that said it was hybrid, but.
Well, there, we're still dealing with getting the rooms. Hooked up for hybrid, so. If it's not ready, then it'll be in person.
Yep.
But that might be of interest to you as far as health and that kind of thing, too.
Yeah.
It, it was for all. The population of Berlin, not just, um, the elderly.
Awesome.
Cool. Know they did get, I don't know if I sent it around, somebody is putting together a. National database of zoning. You did send it around.
So I sent that to. To Trish and said. Had they heard about it and. Um, someone on the staff at C M R P C had, so they thought it, it did seem like a legitimate request, um, that. But I don't think I've heard back from Trish since, so. I can follow up.
Thousand-page spreadsheet that we had to fill out.
Yeah.
We could put a few thousand in the budget to hire someone. No, no, it's been. Can I fill that out? Kind of forgot about it. Now I'm looking for it. I can't find it. I don't know. Must have been a project, summer project for the students that were working on it, and now they're back in school. Yeah. Alrighty, we are all set with administrative and. Stuff like that. So. Okay. Is Emily in the audience?
She is.
Can you promote her, please?
I can. And there's also another member of, um, Central Mass Regional Planning in the audience. Soon as Emily, Emily, um, do you want me to promote Yasefa as well?
Sure, yeah, um, so Yasefa is the Regional Housing Coordinator, so I just invited her to join if that's okay. Um, just so she can quickly introduce herself and just. Yeah. Meet her.
All right.
Yeah, we can probably just start off with her introduction and then, um, she doesn't have to stay for the whole.
There you are.
There we go.
Welcome.
For having me. Okay, so I'm Yasefa, um, I'm the, I'm going to be working as the Regional Housing Coordinator. Um, with the Housing Production Plan, and I guess I'm going to be in the meeting on the twenty-seventh as well for the Housing. Trust meeting, which is happening, I think, on. The Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, so I'll see you guys then as well.
And can you tell the folks? The, the assignment of the Regional Housing Coordinator and the other towns you're working with?
Sure, so I'm working in assisting with housing production plans and helping meet. Um, helping the towns meet their goals for the housing production plans, and the five towns I'm working with. Berlin, Auburn, Mendon, Shootsberry, I'm forgetting one. Grafton, there we go, I got it right. So, yeah, that's what I'm doing.
So, yeah.
Awesome.
No, I think it's going to be a big help to the Housing Trust and, and, uh. It'll, it'll mean that the goals we set in the Housing Production Plan will have someone cracking the whip for us, so that'll be. Helpful.
Excellent. Okay, so let's pivot to Emily. You got some questions answered that you were looking for? Did you get everything you needed?
Um, for the most part, yeah, uh, Tim sent a really helpful follow-up, um, email with, um, answers to the questions. I guess there was just a. Couple things, um, I know, Tim, you had said you were, I didn't realize you were getting a new assessor, so, um. Were you able to stop by and, and get some of those questions answered?
I didn't, um, she started yesterday and I was gonna. Try to catch her, but I, I wasn't around today, so I'm, I'm gonna go and introduce myself tomorrow probably and see. If I can give her a, a short list of a couple things, so she can learn the ropes, you know, it'd be fun.
Wow. Awesome, yeah, just send me, um, a follow-up whenever you get a chance to talk to her. Um. What else did I have? Oh, there was the, the interesting table, um. About the, um. Building permits. And yeah, Tim, you had sent a little follow-up about that, where like. The twenty. Is it the twenty-twenty year? That makes sense, but the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two are a lot higher than you expected, so I thought that was interesting. I, I don't know.
So those.
Yeah.
So those numbers that you had in your chart aren't, aren't the accurate numbers, and I. So I went to the building inspector and, and they gave me. That, see, that two, is it two thirteen for twenty-twenty?
Um, let's see. Two fifteen for twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, so that's when the apartments come on. But in the, in the state. And the building inspector and all have had a conversation about this, because that's why Berlin got tagged as having the most growth in. Any town in the Commonwealth, um, and it was. I, I think a function of those numbers getting. Doubled up somehow, um. Carried over or whatever, so. Ignore your twenty-one and. Twenty-two number or whatever, those, the two big ones, and I sent you a. A couple other numbers that I, that are far more accurate based on what the building inspector said. So those represent Highland Ridge and. The. The two subdivisions, um, which were only five units apiece, but still they're on there, and then. Um, some other just A and Rs. But those, the figures I sent you are more accurate.
Okay, yeah, I'll edit that table and just put like kind of an asterisk or something, some. Saying, these are the numbers from the building inspector, not from HUD. That's interesting that I thought. That HUD data was like reported from towns each year, like. But I guess not, I guess it's just imputed based on.
I, I think somehow Berlin numbers got maybe sent from multiple sources and as a result. Escalated. Maybe that's the best way to put it.
Yeah. I know you guys are growing, but I didn't realize it was much, but. Yeah, those, those numbers make a lot more sense.
Those three numbers would have been like seven hundred units in three years, so at, at that rate, that would have, you know, yeah, we.
We'd be built out.
We'd be in trouble.
Yep. It would have been a much bigger topic of conversation as well.
Yeah.
Um. Cool, that's, okay, good, we, we cleared that up. Um, let's see, anything else? Um.
Did you want to talk about the, the multiple family dwelling zone again and? Because you raised that question.
Oh, yeah, that was an interesting one, and this was also, I took this from the, the previous plan, the twenty-seventeen one. Um, and so there's, there's this part of the zoning bylaw that it says. Um. That, I'll just read it, um. The Table of Principal Use Regulations provide for a multiple dwelling. District in which multi, multifamily dwellings are permitted by rights subject to site plan review. However, no such district exists in the zoning map, so you write about this district in the, in the bylaws, but there's. It's not outlined in the map, so I wasn't really sure if you want to add a district in the map. Or just take it out of the bylaws, it's something that got written in at some point and.
That, that. Zone has existed. Longer than I've been on the planning board.
Whoa.
So it's a long time and. I, I don't know what the. Objective was, and we've just left it in there for years and years and years, so. Um, the fact that it doesn't exist. It may make sense just to. At some point, get it out of the zoning bylaw. I. And what I said to you in the note was, my suspicion is that we're more inclined to use overlays as a means of. Creating multifamily dwelling zones. So it goes to town meeting and the town gets to approve it rather than. Saying that there's land in town that. Is available for multi-dwelling development. And, and having it sort of a blank page, I. And that, I, I know, I know most towns don't do it that way, and that's not supportive of. Easing multi-dwelling units into a community, but. It's not as though we don't have multifamily dwelling units in town, we've, we've got them. And for a small town, we've got a hell of a lot of them, so. We've accomplished the objective, it seems, without having. A zone. So do we need a zone?
I mean, you guys lucked out not being a multifamily or MBTA community, so. It's, it's working so far, you're doing fine so far, so I, I wouldn't say you necessarily have to, um, if the board is flexible, you know, and, and. Kind of very welcoming to multifamily housing, I think that's okay. Um.
It makes for kind of fun when you see it there and you go, oh, wow, there's. I can build multifamily in Berlin, and then you go looking through the entire bylaw and the map and you can't, can't find it anywhere.
Yeah.
The zone.
It's like a Waldo.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not here. Okay, so I'll kind of like hint at, uh. Yeah, a recommendation to. Take, just, I've removed that part, just to clarify, because you don't want something to come up where. Developer says this is allowed, and I don't know, it, it could get weird, so. Um. I think that would make sense just to remove that language if you're not going to add a district to it. I also wanted to, I just realized that the, um. That, uh, what was it? That community health assessment, the one that the presentation on Thursday. Um, I literally just pulled up that report, so I do want to read through that and see if there's any good points that I can take from that and add. Um, to any of these sections, like on, on senior housing or veterans or things like that. Um, it looked like a really interesting report, and I, I'm going to see if I, if the meeting's hybrid, if I can attend on Thursday, um. So that's just another edit I wanted to make. Um, did anyone have any other, any input or edits that they? Wanted to bring up at this meeting? General feelings?
Hmm, I liked it. It's good, comprehensive.
Yeah.
Well done.
I like it. Um.
So what's your sense? You'll, you'll look at that other report, see if there's anything that you might. Throw in, take one last look at it, and then we'll put it to bed?
Yeah, that's my thoughts, um. I just, I haven't yet incorporated your, um. Your responses to this yet, so I'll just do that in this. Coming week or so, um, I guess just send you all out an updated kind of final plan, and then the board just needs to vote to approve it, and then I need to take it to the select board also to approve it. And then, once I get both those approvals, I can send it to, um, the state, and then they have got like a month to review it. Um, so sometimes they take the full month to review it and you're just sitting there waiting, but. Yeah, that's kind of the progression of this plan, and I also have the, um, Yasefa had wrote up the master plan chapter too, so I'm just gonna kind of work on, um, editing that a little bit, and so maybe at the next, I could come to the next planning board. Meeting and present that chapter, um, probably send it out a week before, um. Because that was also part of this, this project.
Great.
Yes, please.
Great. Uh, I mean, it was pretty easy to craft that, because just took everything that was kind of stuck out from the. Housing production plan and, and threw it into the, a more condensed, uh. Yeah, housing chapter. Um, so would we want to wait until the next meeting to vote on this, or do you want to? I don't know if you want to vote on the plan now to approve it? Completely up to you, what you feel comfortable with.
Let's get the, um, the corrections and then we'll vote. So we're voting on, we're not missing anything or forgetting something or whatever. Okay.
That sounds good.
And Jay, we can put Emily on for the same time for our next meeting? I know you said we're going to have a meeting. The seven forty-five work. Yeah, we can do that, yep. Okay. So seven forty-five, next. What's that, the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh?
Just looking that up, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Oh, that sounds good, I will plan to be there.
Cool.
Um, if you have any other edits or anything in the meantime, also feel free to just email me.
Okay. Great. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. See you in a couple weeks, all right?
Good to meet.
Good night. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, um. Continuing discussion of revisiting questions regarding the River Run Lot Six B rezoning.
All right, hold on one second, just trying to figure out how to. How to do something here.
Could I forward the email that I got from Suzanne to you guys? About the spot zoning issue?
No.
I mentioned it, I don't know if I saw the email. See if I can find that. And would that, would that be even in this? This, I, I can't imagine this would be. Spot zoning. Um, what do you mean, what? If we rezoned property. How could that be considered spot zoning? Well, I think it's, um. Changing the zoning of one parcel. For one proponent. As opposed to an, an entire district or something. Okay. Yeah, I'll forward this to you guys, because she had found. Uh, something in the M G L. And about that. I think she was going to look for more information, but I didn't get it yet.
Uh, she is in the audience and has her hand up.
Okay.
Susanna?
Hello. I don't really have anything to say, I just thought if you wanted to ask me questions, I could try to answer them. I am by no means any legal counsel.
Yeah, because she sent us a legal opinion. This is marijuana greenhouse laws.
Uh. Yeah, I didn't find them, I didn't know what your zoning regarded. I was just finding, um. Where I could find a definition of what spot zoning was.
Okay.
And they, both of those things I sent you had, had given examples and definitions of. What it meant to be spot zoning. So, in essence, it can't be for the benefit, it can't be zoning for one lot by itself. If it's going to treat that lot different than the surrounding community. So it has to, there has to be uniformity. Um. It can't benefit the owner of the property at all. Only. Only, it has to have some form of public benefit. So that was where I left it, so if it, if this does become a bigger issue, I definitely recommend speaking to. Legal counsel rather than me, who's just Google.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that we, um. Well, I don't know if it was consensus, because I don't think we had consensus, but. The general feeling was that. This attempt wasn't going to satisfy what they want to ultimately. It, it wasn't going to satisfy what the town ultimately wanted or what the whole town ultimately. Had in mind when they were, when that bylaw was created, crafted. So, a- and you're, the notion, at least for me, the notion of protecting land that's already protected.
Doesn't fly.
No, no, it was to protect raw land, land that could be developed, so.
Additional land.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so, I mean, I understand it was convenient, it's geographically close to where they are and that type of thing, but. I don't see that, we're gaining enough of a benefit from it.
Correct.
Chris was gonna join us and maybe there's some update from what's.
So there's, um, so Chris Keefe is here, Christos, who is the attorney for. Um. Hundred River Road for the Stevens Family Foundation is here. Um, would you like me to promote people?
Uh, and they have their hands raised, they want to be heard? Yep.
Oh, and a different Chris Peretti? Oh, oh, alright.
Better together, yep.
Okay. And Christos. There we go. Hmm, there we go. And then. Uh, Chris Keefe as well?
Sure.
Gonna get confusing, I thought two Toms was bad. There we go.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, everyone, good to see you all.
Hi, Christos.
Good evening.
So, who's going first? I don't understand what we're, do you have an update for us or is, do you have a penetrating insight? Or a question?
Um, well, I, I think, you know, after the last meeting, I gathered that this likely wouldn't work out in terms of. Res zoning a piece of, of that parcel or, you know, or a parcel, um. Like we were exploring, so it's, you know, at this. Basically, at this point in time, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a worthwhile effort for. The Stevens family to, to purchase that parcel for the, for the water, um, alone, so I think. At least the direction we're gonna head is, is probably to just. Leave it as is and either build a, a building that's the same as what was existing. That was taken down or, um, search for land elsewhere. And the town to kind of satisfy it that way as opposed to doing piecemeal, multiple parcels and putting it together and. Even if this, even if, you know, I did get all of your blessings and you thought it was a good idea, we'd still have to. The amount of time it would have to take to go through and its uncertainty, it, it just, um, it doesn't seem like a. A worthwhile effort, I think, at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so one thing I, I would remind you is that the land. That needs a, needs protecting, does not need to be owned by the Stevens Family Foundation. So, just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
Definitely a good consideration, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Does anybody else have any comments or questions or? Insights that they'd like to share? No?
Alright, woo.
Okay. See something that I don't see.
Eight oh nine.
We're on a tight ship when we can.
Is, so what is the, their plan? So the plan for the. Lot accommodating the new building, you said you're gonna put the same size, um, is there a plan? Is there adequate water for the, on site for what the new plan will be?
Well, I think what we would, if, if we're just, you know, in terms of replacing what was existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what the, you know. The, the use is gonna end up being, I mean, if it's, it's not going to be, uh, if we don't get that parcel next. Next door with the water there, um. It's, it's not going to be, um, something that's likely going to be open to the public for the, at least. In the beginning until that piece gets sorted out, I mean, there needs to be. Um, additional water, you know, at some, at some point in time, so if, if the. You know, the goal is to eventually get to a point where it can be open to the public and that's kind of the whole idea behind it, so. Something will need to happen at some point, but it would just not be right out of the gate. If things stay, stay the way that they are.
Alright. Is it okay if I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Uh, Christos, this is Chris Keefe, I think you've talked with us, Kristen and I.
Yes, yes, hi, Chris, how are you?
Good. Um, I'll just give the planning board a little bit of an update, um. I think we're coming to an end, hopefully, maybe in a meeting or two with River Bridge. Um, on trying to finalize some things that are still left in the agreement we have with them. Um, and I'm curious as to whether you're, if you are still, uh, looking for water supply. If, um, I think that could be in play again, if we can come to agreement with River Bridge.
Yeah, I think, uh, it's definitely an option there, I think it's, it depends on. What happens, I mean, I think if the town ends up getting that, exercising the option of purchase that parcel.
Yeah.
Then it would, it would be a real interest there, um.
Okay.
But if not, uh, and it remains with the current owner, I don't, I don't, I don't see that happening.
Um, I, I, I have a good feeling, um, and as long as things go as we hope they'll go. Uh, we are thinking of, um, probably either a December or a January town meeting, so that we can get things going. Um, and that would be also to the planning board, if they have anything they'd want to add to. A town meeting in December or January, that, you know, they, they'll get the notification. And can let us know if there's anything they'd like to add to the town meeting.
I'm sure we will find something to add.
Good.
We never let an opportunity go by, but we don't at least be heard.
Well, that's good, it kind of cuts down on the Maytown meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe. Uh, if, if I may ask a question, um. Chris Keefe, just since there's three Chrises here, um. Uh, um. Uh, there's two wells on the boundless event, on the, um, on lot, what is it, six B? Is that true? Yeah. Um. And we always have the option to do, um, the one dollar purchase of six B for, you know, and. The only problem with that is that we would still share the wells with the Sennys if we didn't. Try to, um, purchase six A. Then if we purchase both lots, then we would, the town would have both wells also.
Oh, we have a, uh, you're muted, Tim.
There are two wells, they're fifty-three feet apart. The state doesn't recognize, in anything I've seen, that we can draw from two wells. We can draw what one well would supply, ten thousand. But we can't draw twenty, so. Uh, when, when Sennys always say there's two wells and I say, well, the state doesn't recognize. That you can draw twenty thousand gallons a day, so it's. It's, it's still, that cap is in place, I just think it's important for us to understand that.
Yeah, I think also just the fact that if the Sennys are still involved in six A. Then we share whatever those wells produce.
Is it still deemed a public water supply? They've got that status, though, right?
I think it, I think it did, didn't it, Tim?
It did, but whether it's been renewed and maintained, you know, does it have to be reactivated?
Yes.
I, I don't, yeah, so.
Uh, Tom Eloise has her hand up.
Okay, Eloise, good evening.
Greetings all, uh, if you're talking about a special town meeting, can you gear it towards December? Because January, we're starting for the presidential primary, which is March five.
We, we will try, Eloise, I, I'll keep that in mind.
I know where you live. Thank you.
Okay. Well, there's a little bit more, uh, information to be garnered, I guess, Christos, so, TBD.
Yeah, there are a lot of options, you can get creative with it and. We'll keep tabs on how, uh, things are going with six B. With Chris and Kristen, we'll, we'll stay in touch.
Okay.
Because, yeah, if, if the, the water's gonna be shared, that's, that's gonna be. It'll be an obstacle, but if it's not, then, um.
If, if the building were open to the public, what do you, do, do you have any estimation of how much water you would need?
I don't know that answer, I don't know if Chris Peretti does, he's on, he's, he might not have that information either, but.
Uh, no, I, I don't know that.
Okay.
Either, yeah, I was just curious.
I know we have, we, I know the information is there, I just, I just don't have it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, but, uh. Yeah, we'll see.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, thank you all for having me again, appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be hearing from you soon?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Back on it, I'm back on it.
Alright.
Alrighty.
Take care, have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks.
Okay, we're a little bit behind our schedule, but. We have a signed by law update. And continuing to work.
Alright.
Well, last time we discussed this, I think you all had homework to go to, I'm sure everybody did, but didn't hand it in.
What was our homework?
Hmm, can I share my screen? See.
I don't know, can you?
I, I do this and I get it all figured out and then I get these teams meetings, which are totally different and not as good. Okay, let's see, here it is. One, two, three. Not that one, ooh, there it is. There, is that big enough?
Yes.
That seems to be where we left off last time, right here. It's a little vague there, huh?
Uh.
Did we decide it was text only, no movies?
No movies.
Pictures?
No.
We could have live streaming the sunset from Sawyer Hill.
No, thank you, sir.
Well, here's a good one to talk about.
What, what kind of content would be allowed?
Yeah, kind of an interesting set of questions.
So, refresh my memory, I believe we said just municipal use, correct?
I think we were initially talking about that and then at one point, I think. Thomas was talking about adding religious and. Um, nonprofit, we did talk about that, I think we were kind of staying away from that.
Right, do you have that in your notes?
I thought we tried, well, Thomas was proposing to open it up to further people, but I think we were more, the consensus was more. Keep it as municipal only.
Okay, so that's, so we can.
Right, so that makes this part easier.
Easier, right, so this one would be no, right?
Right. Um, like cultural events, sporting events, recreational events, holiday events that would be town sponsored. I would imagine.
Yeah.
But not otherwise. Um, is that totally true?
If you're gonna do it on a movable LED, yeah.
But like, so.
So cultural events would frequently be a, a non-town sponsored event. I mean, was something in eighteen seventy or.
Right, or doesn't the Lions Club do Christmas in Berlin?
I mean, they help with parts of it, certainly, yeah.
Okay. Um. Right, so the, all the, the, hmm, so are holiday events cultural events?
I was envisioning that the, someone would, there'd be some guidelines which. Someone would admin, would administer whoever it was that had the keys. To the programming and then there would be a decision-making body that would, um. Handle the gray areas like the select board maybe.
Uh, Eloise has her hand up.
Usually, anything from outside of town has to get, uh, Board of Selectmen approval now. Like if they're having a bike run through town. So it would be. So it, it would be easier if you just spell it out. You have to go to the selectman and then they ask you dates, times, if you have to have police. You know.
So, so Saint Joe's Fair, the, the Friendship Fair, the uh, concert series at Nineteen Carter, uh, Contra Dance at the Town Hall, eighteen seven, I mean, what, what, where do they fall? Are they all non-town? But are they cultural, so even though they're not town, they they, they, they're allowed on this board?
Well, how do you like this? Town-sponsored and select board approved?
Yeah.
Could be part of your approval process, do you get to have space on the sign? Does the pictures you're going across would be one of your?
You know, we have a cultural council.
Yeah.
Right, right, I mean, I think especially if the select board already approves non-town events, I think that is easy to just extend that.
Right. Yeah, because one of the things you want is you want it to be reason, to be timely, so you don't want to be getting approval from a group that only meets once a month.
Yep.
Right.
And then there may be issues of uh, multiple things that want to get, you know, too many things want to get posted at once and someone has to make a decision or whatever, there has to be some kind of human involvement, seems like.
Right. We happen to have a member of the select board present this evening whose hand is raised.
Only recognize her if she's willing to say yes.
Yes to what, Tim?
That you guys will oversee the approvals.
Well, right now, I think Kristen is overseeing the approvals.
There you go.
She's had um, she had a request of some kind from Saint Joseph's and denied them because she said that we don't put religious things on our sign, the, the sign, you know, in the center of town.
Yeah.
Um, and cultural could be the schools. Um, they have culture.
Oh yeah, we did a school in here, do we?
Through, through link or something. Um, but generally, it's mostly town stuff right now. Um, and of course, maybe public notices because the, you know, and public safety, those kind of things, those are town things. Um, and, and, and if, if this, if the activity is sponsored by the town, I think they would consider putting that on the um, um, on the sign. Um, I mean, you might, Jay, you might want to talk to Kristen and see what she thinks of these subjects.
Yeah. Well, maybe we should invite her next time, if we can get her.
He said the woo sucks tonight.
Yeah.
Otherwise, she'd be here.
Oh, that's right, that was tonight. I forgot about that, the town takeover.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, I think you're on the right road here.
I'm guessing we don't need time and temperature now that everybody has it on their phone.
Uh, well, I can tell you what the obnoxious sun in Hudson says. There, there, often it will have the time, the te- current temperature, and the three-day forecast.
Oh my goodness.
Yes.
Have an accident trying to read that sign, huh?
Oh, Chris, you have no idea. Take a, take a drive, especially after dark some night.
It's so glary.
Oh, it's, especially on a rainy night.
Yeah.
The, the wet just reflects off of the road, and it's
terrible.
Terrible.
Well, I, I thought for a while there that even the school sign, when they had that up, that I, I was practically having an accident trying to read the whole thing, because it was, you know, going from one line, you know, it had so much on the sign.
Right, well, that certainly is uh, a, an argument in favor of the blanky sign.
Um, what about temporary specials? We could be selling this space, you know, making some money for the town.
Well, that's another subject then, right?
Doesn't, doesn't that come under advertising? Would you have a red no next to?
Um, you think of anything temporary, or maybe that, maybe that's just kind of a subset of what we already got?
So, like, what would, what would you foresee being a temporary thing?
Road closed?
Or shows? I don't know.
Right, because I mean, all of it.
I don't think, I don't think it's meaningful, I think we should get rid of it.
Yeah.
Right, I, I think, um, you know, all of it, an event is a temporary posting.
Yeah.
Once the event's over, it's not posted anymore.
Yep. All right, so we good so far with this type of section?
Yeah, and what, you haven't made a decision about time, temp, and weather.
Well, no, the X is at the top, no informed is.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, look at, that's all your, the fancy formatting you were doing.
Yep. That.
If it's a no, a no news day, or a no event day, you could always put the time and temperature up there.
Right?
I don't think Carolyn would like it.
No.
We could turn it off if nothing was going on.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I do now. Now, content management. At one time, I talked Mary Arata, Arata into volunteering to do the um, implementation with the select board making decisions.
Well, right now, I think we actually have Fred do the sign, put whatever we want up on the sign.
Well, that makes sense because he installed it. But I, I don't think that's, makes sense in the long run, because I think, I think this decision-making, there's, I think every time a request comes in, somebody has to make a decision, is that okay or not? And they're gonna end up in many cases with either Kristen or the select board, and so it really made, to me, it made a lot of sense having Mary do it. Or whoever's in her job, right?
Right.
Yeah, what's her name, Chris?
Dee Green.
So.
What's her, what's her job title?
Uh, administrative assistant, I believe.
Yeah. And she's technically Kristen's.
Or to the town administrator.
To the town administrator, basically, she reports to the town administrator.
Okay.
I mean, she does things for us too, but uh, she reports to the town administrator.
We could put that in, and then you could, if you would go back and talk about it at the select board, see if that's an idea you guys like.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, so what's this employer minimum age thing?
Uh, it was getting late when I wrote this.
It doesn't like administrator, the way you spelled it.
There's an eye missing.
Oh, yeah, look at that, it's so smart. I think this last thing here was about I don't know, removing it or something, I don't, I'm not sure what I was thinking about there. Oh, I think if we um, I was looking at our current town bylaw, and there is a section in there about, about removing an abandoned sign, you can't just leave it forever.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that really applies to this.
Right, if it's just gonna be municipal.
Yeah. I'll put this in TBD. What do you, Chris?
We have a very gung-ho applicant that we have voted to approve for the administrative assistant, she'd probably do, she'd probably do that.
Good.
So we'll, I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah, because I mean, you guys have to, so, you know, allocate a little bit of time. Presumably, you know, we'll get, whatever we buy, we'll have um, software, and over the web, over the internet, and it would be relatively easy to do.
Can you send me a copy of that, Jay?
Of this one, go right here, sure. On the website too, if I forget.
Okay.
In the, but I'll send it to you, yeah.
Okay.
And then this, I just had what we currently have, which I think we went over already, I think I moved this all. Yeah, let's go back to where we got here, we got um, only municipal signs. Uh, other than what we've already allowed for businesses, right?
Right.
But I guess this is superseded by what I have down below.
Right, so you do have churches and nonprofits checked off there.
Yeah, so that's the this may be just signs in general, but not LED. Yeah, okay, so these are signs that are allowed in the bylaw now, I don't know if we're gonna change that. And down here is, is the specifics for LED signs, which we're gonna just use what we just finished writing. And we didn't decide about size, I guess, for this LED sign. I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a recommendation on that yet, I kind of like the one that we had a picture of in Northborough, but I'm not sure, I don't know if I measured that. And we probably have to look at pricing too.
I imagine, one, this big wouldn't cost very much.
Hmm, yeah, it would be called a phone and it costs a thousand dollars, yeah. We could put a lot.
Not if you sign up for, through your contract.
Uh, what about this location? This is, this is what I'd like to start with.
The school one certainly makes sense. I mean, that's their request for one was what started all of this from the get-go.
Yep. And we've already got one in town center, I think this is just an upgrade.
Is that on town land? That's, yeah, it is on town land, isn't it?
Town-owned con- uh, town-owned conservation land.
Right.
Right. Which Jay and I have battered, batted this one back and forth many times.
Well, it's gonna be airborne, because it's gonna be up on um, poles, so it won't really be sitting on the conservation land exactly.
You know, Carolyn, I, do you know where the, the bound of the conservation land is? I mean, I assumed that the triangle to the east of Pleasant Street, as it joins sixty-two, was town-owned land before we ever acquired the piece from O'Brien.
There, it, it, if, I don't know exactly where it is. Um, I think it's probably notable. If you look on the Mass Mapper site, um, it does show that the town has some frontage. Uh, you know, some of that is town land without the CR, but those are vague pictures, you know, I, I certainly wouldn't um, count on that to be accurate. So I don't know if Fred knows, like, Chris, who in town would know? Um, how much of the land on either side of the street?
Is, I, I thought it was ten feet on either side of the street, like, for example, you know, on Bailey Road where I live, I think ten feet in. Is that, does that sound right?
Usually, what they do is they measure from the center line of the road, and it's ma- majority street, minor streets and major streets, and they, there's two different, there's two different measurements, depending on what it is.
Right, but if, if you look at the, the assessor's map, the, the width of Central Street to the east of Pleasant, as opposed to the west of Pleasant, is significantly greater.
Hmm.
And, and I think it may very well be that, that there's, there's land where we park that sign now that may not be conservation, that may very well be municipal, that isn't in the roadway itself, you know, it's in the right-of-way, but not in the paved.
Right, I, I believe that that's true.
So, there, there may, I, I mean, it's, it would be awkward to go to the some of the places that have had signs before, like the Lions Club had it on Jane's property, and you know, the church has its sign and stuff, but if um, if it's a municipal sign, finding a municipal parcel probably would be preferred, right?
Absolutely.
Right. And that lot is owned by the town.
Yeah.
So it's just finding the boundaries of the conservation restriction.
Yep.
And putting the sign outside of that CR.
Yeah.
Right. Uh, Eloise?
I know at one time in my reign, I saw a list from the uh, county commissioners, and they gave the widths of all the roads.
Yeah.
Private, public, or whatever, I'll try to remember where I filed it.
I mean, clearly.
R for road.
Some rod, roads are two-rod roads, you know, some are different dimensions, but the.
Well, sometimes there are two rods from the oak tree that fell down too.
Yeah, but.
A hundred years ago.
In this case, if you, if you look at that assessor's map, it does seem as though there's significantly greater widths to the east of Pleasant than there is to the west, so Fred may have an idea.
Right, yeah.
But what we're really looking for is where the CR is, right, so we need some kind of map of what CR is.
Right, and I can look up on this conservation restriction and see if there's uh, see how good it is, see how good.
How precise it is.
How precise it is, exactly. Uh, as we know, some of the older ones are not very precise, but Sudbury Valley Trustees is involved with that parcel, and they're usually very precise.
Oh, good.
Like, the Highland Ridge CR, it was, there, it goes around specific rocks. Um, so uh, they, they tend to make sure that it's accurate. So, I will put that on my homework list to find that CR.
Good.
Well, rough, roughly, anyway, it, it if this map is at all accurate, um, Central Street is twice as wide almost to the east of Pleasant as it is in front of the bank. So, yeah, it'd be fun to look at what Sudbury Valley's got, but if they show the similar lot layout, there may be some opportunity on that corner. Without blocking the sightline.
Right, that's the thing, how do, you know, it's the sightline, it's, do you put it on the central street side, on the Pleasant Street side, on the corner, both facing both?
Uh, there is some conversation right now about restriping the end of Pleasant as it ended onto sixty-two, the, the state is working with Fred on that as part of a way to deal with the overflow traffic from four ninety-five and two ninety.
Right.
When, if we, so if we modify our bylaw, and we, we have this Uh, definition of where LED signs are allowed. How much work do we need to do on the actual site, or can we hand that off to a group of people that would then, um, make it happen?
Like, how do you get, how do you get power?
Well, once, once we, zoning is just one of the many hurdles, right, and.
Right.
Um. Look, specifically locating it and, and, yeah. Power and, uh, by the school, there's some issue with who owns the land that's gonna get dealt with. Um.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have public safety chiming in too for sightlines and, you know, you're not gonna put it where it could be a hazard.
I mean, the, the, our end is to create the zoning language that allows it. Although, well, some might argue a municipal use is allowed regardless of what we say, but anyway, um. It, i- i- if we're, if we're putting into the zoning bylaw, language that allows it, then. There's also gonna be language in the. Town meeting warrant that raises and appropriates the sum of money to create it. Um, but that's not a pl- planning board-driven.
That'd be Fred.
That's, that's someone else, that's the select board and Fred.
Language has to be created in order to be able to take the next step and, and appropriate money, so I think it's a two-step process.
Yeah, and I was envisioning a group of people getting together representing all the different. You know, functions in the town government that have to kinda come together and make it happen. Cuz you do have public safety and you've got the highway department and you've got. The select board and somebody from the schools and it's kind of an interesting multidisciplinary project.
Good luck trying to get somebody that's gonna take the lead or not.
Right. I think Jay's volunteering.
Power, that's the problem, you need somebody that's got the juice and, and no one entity. Other than maybe the select board has the juice to pull those different constitu- constituencies together.
Right.
Well, I've been around to speak to some of those people and they were pretty enthusiastic about it.
Sure, until he has to come to a meeting and then they have to do some homework or something and then. If they're not interested, they're not gonna do it.
Wouldn't that be at the edge of the, we gotta improve the town center?
You can, in that, but again, who's going to be the, the leader?
Well, they've, there is already a group that looks into that.
Okay.
I mean, I believe I see public notices and Eric Schotner is the chairman of that group.
Is that new? I wasn't aware of that.
What's it called?
I thought you were on it, Tim.
You mean the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee?
Yeah, yeah, this has to do with traffic.
Oh, oh, I see. Nice try.
I said this was at the very edge of it.
Yeah, it is at the edge, it's falling off the edge.
Right, I, so. I think ultimately it's the select board's decision. Um, I, I, I would just say that it might be something that Kristen could actually do in a department head meeting. I don't wanna volunteer her unless she wants to do this, but I, I would assume she wouldn't mind. Well, hopefully it wouldn't be multiple times.
Right.
Yeah, maybe I'll put some, put some work into it cuz there's gonna be a fair amount of work trying to figure out what we're gonna buy. You know, all the requirements, how to get power to it. How to get the, you know, a reasonable price, I was gonna try to get, um. The highway department to pick up some of the installations, so it doesn't cost us too much and things like that.
The scoreboard sign, the scoreboard sign at, at the uh. Baseball field was twenty thousand, ten for the sign and ten for the pad, the electrical, the installation. Um, this would be technically probably a little more involved, certainly, but I, I mean, that's sort of a. A number anyway, um, for.
I think it's in that, I think it's in that zone, and it depends what we want it to look like, if we wanna make it attractive and.
Yep.
It's gonna require some work and maybe, maybe some people in town wanna contribute to it even.
Right, but all of that is after.
Exactly.
This, what we're working on right now.
Exactly, yep, I think this is kinda the first step.
Well, you, you could have an article at town meeting that, that made the zoning change. And then have an article later at the same town meeting that said, we wanna raise an appropriate X amount of money to install the sign. So, I mean, the, the two go in tandem. The planning board would only deal with this zoning part and Jay and his.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee can deal with the other side, I'm working with Kristen, you know.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Right, so, but, and, and kinda knowing all of those pieces, is there anything else that we need to make sure we address? In the, in what we're working on to help smooth that process?
How smooth do we gonna make it, you know?
Well. Well, certainly size.
Yeah, cuz that's, if you look at what's left, cuz I think we made a lot of progress on this.
Yep.
I think the size, which I'm, like I say, I'm not quite ready to recommend that yet, I was gonna get some more, do some more work. The stuff I know we've talked about, I mean, the content, I think this is a, this is a really big one here. So kneeling that down makes, gets us a lot of progress forward. And if we can find out about management, that helps because. Anybody you talk to about it's gonna wanna know that, you know, how are you gonna make sure that the rules are followed? And then it's easy when I, when I wanna use it for my department, it's not that hard to get it to happen, so it's how it gets managed important. So, and what I put, I should add to this is the backup. Basically, the just, the ultimate decision-making is, goes to the select board, right, we kinda said that, didn't we?
Ultimate decision about the sign or the content?
Content.
I think Chris was saying that Kristen has been doing that.
Oh, so, so, um, not the board, but the administrator, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it would get done more quickly on a day-to-day basis, rather than waiting for us to meet in a meeting.
That makes sense, yep. Yep.
Don't forget, after it goes, if, assuming it gets voted at town meeting, then it has to go to the Attorney General.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah, all zoning does.
Okay.
Right, so until it's certified, nothing, so there's not really a whole lot of point appropriating the money at the same town meeting.
Well, uh, couldn't you do that?
Well, you can, you just won't spend it till you get the approval.
Right, yeah.
If you have access to the money.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Jay, maybe you wanna meet with Kristen and I one day to talk about this.
Um, do you wanna do it before or after we make a decision on zoning? I guess we should probably bring it to you guys after we have a proposal for the zoning change.
I mean, if you and Kristen and I talk about it, then we talk, then we'll put it on an agenda at some point. That's what we, what we usually do is just figure out, you know, when would be a good time to put it on the agenda, but we could have a conversation with you first.
Okay. Well, we'll set that up.
All right, yep, we'll be in touch.
Good. Ten minutes. Look at that, we're seven minutes early, we can have timely topics, right? Right. Oh, I undo my screen here. Um, oh, there it is, way up top of the screen, uh-huh.
There you go.
There.
Make sure you save it.
Yep.
Yeah.
I was panicking today cuz I couldn't find it. It was there.
Is there anything else anybody wants to chat about? Oh, Mr. Wheeler has his hand raised. Two items, first one, sounds like you're playing charades.
Oh. Um. Cuz we've been talking to the folks at Solomon Pond Mall about what they might perceive as. Modification to the overlay in order to accommodate some of the uses they might wanna bring aboard. Um, but in looking at the. The regional shopping center overlay district language. I, I've got a question that I wanted to throw out. It, in, in section four twenty-four seven, it says, a building or structure originally constructed. And used as a regional shopping center shall continue to be used as a regional shopping center in conformance with the approved development plan. As the same may be modified by the planning board through site plan approval process. Except as follows, and number A is a building or structure. May be converted to a use or uses permitted in the underlinings, underlying zoning district. Subject to a special permit and site plan approval under the zoning bylaw and submission of a report documenting. The community and environmental impacts of such conversion, including. A traffic impact analysis conforming to general accepted standards for such studies. So, the, the, the way I read that, it, the planning board has the authority. To allow limited business uses. In a portion of the mall, if, if we were to, cuz we have site plan approval and. Special permit authority for the mall, for the overlay, as I recall, so. Is that the way you'd interpret that language? That, they, they could, as things stand today, come in and say, we've. We've acquired Sears from Sears and what we wanna do is. This use that's allowed in the underlying zone, which is limited industrial and that allows. Research and development, um, however we might define that.
So, the, a parcel that is in Berlin, that's part of the mall. Is that all one zone, limited industrial, or is it multiple zones?
It's, everything, the underlying zone was limited industrial and.
Entire piece.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'll make sure, cuz we've got the zoning map here in the back.
Cuz I thought there was a portion of it that wasn't. But it might be the parking lot, so the point will be moved.
It looks pretty complete, according to this, that it's limited industrial under.
Okay.
Municipal building, uh, zone area and it might.
So, multi, uh, rez is not allowed in the limited industrial. So, they can't put in an apartment house or anything like that then.
They wanted to move in that direction, and I think they'd have to be a zone and change, but.
Okay.
Um.
Right, which would have to go to town meeting.
Right.
Our forty B.
Uh.
Forty B doesn't care about zoning.
It's, uh, a, a.
That's why it's unpopular.
Ag- ag- agreed, however, if you're, if you're bulletproof, then we don't have to entertain that if we don't want to.
It depends, it could be a friendly forty B.
Right.
Could be a friendly forty B, yeah.
Or if they're gonna take care of a protected class of people that we have not.
Hmm.
Don't put any ideas in Mara Healy's head, please.
I, uh, uh, that's all I'm gonna say.
So, in the limited industrial zone, research and development offices or establishments. Would be allowed with site plan approval and a special permit, as well as residential conferences and, and training centers. Commercial photographers, building materials, sales rooms. All, that cluster would. And then research. Um, medical and dental laboratories, research laboratories and manufacturing enterprises, storage warehouses and buildings, wholesale distribution plants. And printing or publishing establishments. So, I mean, we may wanna think about whether all those uses are uses that we'd be. Willing to go forward for that, that zone. I mean, we.
Well, I mean, we do have site print approval and all that, so I mean, we could make it. Right.
Yeah, but it may be easier, since this is the only limited industrial site left in town, we, we may very well wanna. Revisit that list and update it before, before they come to us, um, you know. It may be, it, it would simply be changing the chart, maybe in a definition or two in the. In the definition section, um, so I.
Well, so, so that begs the question of, off of our forums and what have you, people were. Uh, amenable to multi-res, would we be entertaining putting multi-res in the limited industrial?
If, if that's.
The only, only possible left.
You know, you could, you could do it and, and not, well. You might, you might build it into the overlay. You might build it into the overlay instead of the, the underlying zone.
I'd prefer that because then it goes back before town meeting and it's a wider audience.
Yeah, and, and modifying the, the chart would be town meeting, but it, we might not wanna let. Residential uses in the industrial zone as a, as an allowed use only with special permit, I mean, you still.
And, and I think that, 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 by doing that, at least. It, it's, it's, it's a shorter process, in other words, if we just put that, if we update that use table, right? Now, all that responsibility falls back on the planning board, yes, we can have public hearings and what have you, but. I think if it was put into the overlay and you had people at a wider, bigger meeting, understanding what. They bought into with an overlay.
Yeah.
It's not like you're playing a, a shell game.
Yeah, I like.
Not that we would, but it just, it seems to me like it's, it's a, it's a.
It's more transparent.
Exact, it's more transparent and it's a higher bar to hit.
And it, it may, it may benefit us to say to, uh. The housing coordinator and the housing trust, give us some feedback and thoughts on. You know, how they feel about housing as an option at the mall.
Right.
I mean, a- again, she, she's here to help the town with housing as a housing coordinator, so. Digging into research, looking at what other towns have done, looking at what other malls have done in terms of their rejuvenation and stuff, you know, with housing. Sky's the limit.
Right.
She's a resource, we can jump on and use her, you know.
Bruce has her hand up.
Maybe, maybe you won't have to worry about that, I'm, I'm thinking positive. Um, I did go to the Solomon Pond Mall grand opening on the thirty-first of August. Um, at that, at that grand opening, I think they cut the ribbon for six additional stores that they've added.
Hmm.
And, uh, only one unfortunately was in Berlin. Um, but it will attract more people, I hope. Um.
Did Berlin get the Halloween, um.
No, it got, it got one called something like Artisan Crafters, which I'm not quite sure how that works. Um.
People can sell their crafts.
That's kind of what I thought it was, but they didn't really explain it that day.
She has a business certificate, I interrogated her, don't worry.
I think we're also getting a, a children's activity area.
Yeah.
Um, in the back end, uh, the back entrance there. Um, but you know, I'm I'm trying to think positive and they did say they were gonna work on getting more stores in the Berlin end. Cause there are still some vacant stores.
Right.
Well, when when Peter and I met with um Liz and the three or four representatives from the group that was helping them figure out new strategies, housing ended up high on their list and that was a month ago.
Oh.
I I still think they they're trying to figure out a housing component and the the Metropolitan Regional Planning Agency's study for Donald Lynch Boulevard pushed housing as a high priority. And the the information you get from the news media right now, when they talk about any malls that are going through the metamorphosis to try to catch up, is housing seems to be a significant component in the majority that are successful, so I I think signs point in that direction, so we'll see.
Well, I think I think Tom's right, though. I think having a bigger group to approve something like that's probably the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, you never know in Berlin which way it's gonna go, do you?
Nope.
Well, at the housing forum, people were
Right.
pretty positive. I thought, you know, that's a good sign and and uh.
Again, it was on, it's on the periphery. There's a lot of pluses to it. It's in, you know, i- i- it's access to highways. You know, you got, you got, there's so many advantages to having it in that location versus you know, someplace close River Road West, for instance, or someplace along those lines, that it's a little more challenging.
Right.
Right.
The big thing is water and sewer.
Yeah.
It's a big plus.
Well, I can say a few other things, but I can't remember what they are anymore, so.
Perfect.
Do you like a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a motion and a second, it's non-debatable. So I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the analyst to adjourn at nine oh seven PM.
Nice.